Okay, I'll call the Budget Board together. We'll start with roll call with the assessor.
Larry Stein, President.
Miles Davidson.
Brian Mon, Joe Blauffer, Kerry Blumer.
Marissa Treat.
Okay, the notice of the meeting was properly posted on September 20th. Avery, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of August 17?
Motion approved.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
On the consent docket, item number 22 should be 2023-3943. It's a scripter's error. And I believe we need to strike number 24. It's been at least requested that we do so. I'm sorry. All in favor say aye on the ayes or buttes. Okay. Any other questions on the consent docket? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve as amended?
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Micah.
Good morning.
Morning.
We go to the PowerPoint today. Let's see, the first slide, this, these are the numbers as of August 31st. Today on the agenda is also the supplement, so this all changed. But as of August 31st, we had $692,000 in reserve. If we adopt a supplement today, it will be raised to about 1.8 million. Then, let me see, on page five. I just wanted to kind of show you that the intergovernmental revenue is up this year compared to last year because we have received the juvenile detention payment for 2223 in August of $2,020,000. And also, the next line, the ARPA interest this year compared to last year. Last year, we had only received one month, so that's kind of, those are the numbers that are kind of skewed. But we're right on track. That's general fund. Then we go to employee benefits. And this is all based off of two months of data. And we're looking better, kind of in the positive, so that's good. And then, the next slide. Instead of by date paid, I pulled the data as of by register date. So that's a better comparison to what we, the claims we received last year to this year. And we are 9.7% down net, so that is going the right way as well. And then my last piece is the capital projects. We have $52,241 in capital projects as needed. There is a line, there is an item on this agenda to move $35,000 out of that. And then, the unallocated fund is 241,548. And there's also another item to move some of the lined items later on in the agenda. I also mentioned that the courthouse security improvement will be on the supplemental, on the supplement as a recommendation for $500,000 to put a line item as well, which will reflect next month if it gets approved. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions, Micah? Is there a motion to receive a report?
Motion received.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Cody?
Good morning. You will notice quite a few changes on the watch list this month from last month. As we were going through the September supplement, discussing potential funding options, there were numerous items that we moved over to the watch list. That is the reason why there are so many more items on there now than there were last month. One of the items that was on there last month is actually listed here as a recommendation. It is part of our September supplement recommendation, and it's $500,000 to fund a security project over in the courthouse. If you guys remember, at the end of last fiscal year, towards the end of the year, we had a discussion related to judicial chambers, the badge access readers. This $500,000, which is item 39 on your agenda, would fund that project. That's all I have on the watch list. Do have other items on the.
Couple of questions on the watch list. We've got, we're still have a million dollars on there for employee benefits, and $300,000 still on the watch list for self-insurance. For some reason, I thought we were looking at possibly funding that.
We are. In the supplement recommendation, we do have $500,000 funding into employee benefits and $200,000 going into self-insurance. This is just on there as a just-in case later on in the year. We don't have any inclination that we're gonna need anything like that at this time. We just felt like it was appropriate to have a placeholder for those two items.
Okay, but, okay, so later on then.
But yes, normally, we don't fund those through the September supplement.
Right.
And due to the little bit different nature this year, we had some one-time money versus ongoing money. And with that one-time money, we had felt that it would be appropriate to go ahead and do the $500,000 into employee benefits upfront. Normally, we're holding that on the watch list.
Further questions? Is there a motion to receive these reports?
Motion received.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Wilkerson.
Who seconded that last?
I did.
Go ahead.
Sure. Do you mind bringing up the attachment on the board? Thank you. Good morning. Just a real quick summary of where we're at. I know Micah spoke on some of it, but overall, we're about 13% under net where we were last fiscal year. If you remember, we made the retiree change 7-1 this fiscal year, moving them to Medicare Advantage for the prescription plan. I look back at all the prescription invoices we paid last fiscal year, and then the two that we paid this fiscal year from last fiscal year. And the average under our new plan, starting 7-1, is about $78,000 every two weeks. So we see that those retiree changes are working. We're seeing our prescriptions claims go down from that change. We also have 10-1. Just remember, we're changing to Affirmed RX. Megan's here, if you want to stand up, with Affirmed RX. They go effective 10-1 behind the scenes to manage our prescription plan. They're the most transparent company out there. Most of the major PBMs will not disclose their fees that they charge the companies. That's just the way it is in the market. They're very transparent on their fees. So we expect to save some more money when we go 10-1 with them.
I'm sure I don't have to tell you, because I'm sure you've got the thousands of calls also. There is a world of confusion among our retirees as to what change we did. And unfortunately, I'm certainly not, I can't explain it to them. So what did we do?
So for retirees, just to recap what the board approved. Before, the retirees were on a Medicare supplement policy that picked up 100% of what Medicare didn't pay. And they were on our prescription plan. And they have the same dental and vision coverage. Effective 7-1, we put them on a group Medicare Advantage plan where Medicare/Blue Cross/Blue Shield pays 100% of their medical costs. So same as that coverage, it's an open network. Any Medicare provider can bill under that retiree coverage. The government subsidizes that plan, so we're paying less. We put them on a prescription drug plan that mirrors our current drug plan. Same co-pay, same coverages, but the government subsidizes those costs. So those members, effective 7-1, those 465 retirees, 65 and older, were removed from our prescription plan, added to that Medicare Advantage prescription plan. And they're changed that supplement plan that the government subsidizes. So on 7-1, those 465 lives or people were moved off our prescription plan. And that's kind of why we see the averages going down.
Okay. A certain unnamed former county officer's husband went to the pharmacy right after this change, and they wouldn't accept anything.
I think there's a lot of miscommunication.
Yeah, I promise you.
Yeah, absolutely. We've sent out so much, so much information. And long story short, that program has a specialized customer service department that works outside of Blue Cross/Blue Shield and the prescription program that handles all their issues. So every single time an issue came up, we've got them involved, and they've got it handled. The biggest thing that we ran into, that new Medicare supplement plan is, it says Blue Cross/Blue Shield on the card. It's an open network, so the providers aren't used to seeing an open network. In the private sector or individual plan, if they have a Medicare Advantage plan, they only have a small network of doctors they can go see. Our Medicare Advantage plan is a group one. It's open to any Medicare provider. So when the doctor's office sees that card, their initial reaction was, oh, we don't accept that. So it's been some education going back and say, hey, it's any Medicare provider. You get paid the same amount. It just kind of works behind the scenes. The government subsidizing that program, if that makes sense. So every single issue that we've encountered, we've got solved. It's basically really a misunderstanding communication issue.
Yeah, and I think you're right. I think it's the Blue Cross/Blue Shield that's got things all. And I didn't realize that's where it's coming from on the card.
Yeah, on the cards. The first couple of months, we dealt with a lot of issues of providers saying, hey, we don't accept that coverage. So then we have to call the provider's office and say, are you Medicare provider? And they say, yes. And they say, any Medicare provider can build that plan. They get paid Medicare rates. The members don't know anything. So it's really communication and working through those initial things. We've seen about 4% of members have issues at first, but we've got to resolve all those issues. So, long story short, they have the same coverage as they had before, just different payers. Just different payers.
Just to, just to give you again a heads up, most of them are saying, get a rope. So be careful.
I'd be happy to talk to those people. Just on the next page, real quick, if Cassie, once she gets back. So I just did a summary on the agenda, and this shows kind of where we've been over the last nine years compared to the market. On medical, I, but what the actuary said the trend is for, the average trend is from year to year. Over nine years, the actuary average was, medical plans go up 13% every year, okay? Our average was 4% over nine years. So we were about 9% under what the market trend was for our medical plan. On the second graph below that, the average actuarial, just the market trend, would have increased us $1.7 million every year. Our average was $500,000 every year, so we came in about $1.2 million over a nine-year span. So just, this just reflects how we came in versus the average market trend for medical plans. And we came in about 9% under what the market was. The next slide just shows on the prescription plan the same details. The average market trend over nine years for prescription plans was 15%. We came in at 11%, so about 4% under the average trend for prescription plans. It's easy to get caught in year to year and see something go up, and the next year we go down. But it's really good to see a long period of time how we're doing compared to other plans. We're doing really well. So... That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Questions?
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there a motion to receive these reports?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is to transfer in District 3. You want to speak, Commissioner? It's been motioned, seconded, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, item 31 is the District 3 transfer.
Same item from Operation to Travel. I'll move approval.
Second.
Thank you.
And now, for also for District 1, you want to move hers, since she moved yours?
I'll move approval.
Sorry, I thought we were on, I thought we were on 32.
No, you're fine.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, I think we're voting on 32, but the item still shows 31 on the screen, so wait till it catches up.
Okay.
All right, try it again for 32.
I'll move approval on item 32.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Treasurer has the next item.
Thank you very much. This item has to do with the location, who would become the supervisor of our purchasing agent. The, incidentally, my title was the liaison with purchasing agent, not the supervisor.
I have a question therefore.
Yeah.
Actually, her being under the Budget Board, we're all her supervisors. I mean, basically, she's under us, and therefore, just like if they're under the county commissioners, then the county commissioners does direct them, and we would direct her, including yourself.
I'm not sure that that's the most efficient way to operate.
I totally agree.
Okay. Okay, good. Anyway, but that's a good point. I mean, having eight different supervisors is going to be rather difficult. And I kind of think that's what we may have been looking and thought maybe we were doing. And I was, again, the point of contact. So anyway, I don't think that worked. I think it makes a lot, and let me also bring up that the statutes, and I actually did not know the one caveat in the statutes. We recall this all came about in the 80s as a result of the commissioner scandal. And the statutes allow then that the, if you're a Budget Board county, that the purchasing agent can work for the Budget Board or the county clerk. And that would be up to the Budget Board as to where she would be placed or he would be placed. And in this instance, all of the material that she needs, the vast majority of the material that she needs is located in the county clerk's office. And it would seem to me that the best supervision that can be provided for her lies in the county clerk's office. Incidentally, this, right now, we're just wrapping up the build-out on the third floor for her new offices. Nothing would change on that. Nothing would change on that. She would still, I'm not sure this Quinn, that's going to be completed, but it's getting very, very close. And so that would not change. The thing that would be changed is that her supervisor would be the county clerk. And again, to me, that makes a lot more sense. That's where the expertise is. That's where, Micah, that's where the expertise is. And for her then to be able to be there and have that expertise right with her, then to me, that just makes a lot more sense. And anyway, so with that, I would move this, this motion, that is, that the purchasing agent, county purchasing agent, would be moved to the Oklahoma County Clerk's office to include purchasing director, all purchasing staff, and the grant writer. That's my motion.
I have a question about our grant writer. Is Nikki here? Okay. It's my under, I know right now you report to purchasing. You report to Ms. Boso. Love the shoes. Love them. You report to Ms. Boso, but pretty much every grant you apply for, you have to get the Board of County Commissioners approval. Correct. Okay. 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 That was my only question.
All right. Is there any other discussion without a second? Does anybody want to offer a second? All second. I think this just conforms with the way it is in every other county except for Tulsa, and.
Does the Tulsa purchasing person report?
To the Budget Board, but in all the, from my understanding, from all the other Budget Board counties, it still remains in the clerk's office except Tulsa.
Yeah, this, in my opinion, was done in 1980, as you said, for transparency. And then placing this under a single set of eyes, transparency, instead of having all eight of us sit there and look at her, all eight of us use her, it moves it under one. We moved it out for a reason. It's not Marissa that I'm worried about. It's what may come after her. It was out for a reason, and we need to keep it out. It needs to stay where it's not under a single elected official. If you want to move it under BOCC and put it under three, I mean, Butch, I understand that you don't want to be the supervisor anymore. That's fine. We can name another supervisor up here.
Yeah, and I understand that. I will never support having, going to the Board of County Commissioners.
That's fine.
And the reason for that has nothing to do with you, or you, or you.
That is a great target.
We're going to get crucified if we do that. You want to regurgitate all of the 1980 stuff and the Bill Price's stuff? That'd be a great way to do it. I just don't think it's worth it.
I don't even think law allows.
My understanding is it doesn't allow for it, so I don't think it's.
No, but we can name a supervisor, and it could be a member of the BOCC. But no, you're absolutely right, and you made the exact point that I'm making. Putting it back to the way it was pre-1980 is a bad idea.
It wasn't that way. It wasn't that way. The purchasing agent worked for the Board of County Commissioners. They did not, they never worked for a budget. There were no budget boards.
And then they moved it out in 19.
Can you, so the, you said previously, the purchasing director reported to the county clerk here in Oklahoma County?
Until 2002 or 2001.
Until 2002 or 2001? And was it a vote of the Budget Board to move it under Budget Board?
Yes.
I think that was, that was the time the Budget Board was disbanded, wasn't it?
No, 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 no.
That occurred later.
Five or six, somewhere in there.
Okay.
Seven.
Do, what was the reason for moving it from the clerk's office to be a Budget Board employee?
I was a staff member at the time, and I think that we thought that there was, first off, there was a dynamic lady that we, that had, that we wanted to hire, that was hired for the purchasing director, and they thought that she could, it was to go out and do things independent. Commissioner Davidson's not wrong. I mean, it, there was a personality involved at the clerk's office at the time, and they thought that this lady would do wonders, and.
The purchasing director.
Mm-hmm, and she, she served here for a while.
And I think that's, that's the importance of that statement right there, is it's currently independent under all of our guise. We all use it. Putting it under a single.
Well, that's no different than the way payroll works now. We all use that, for sure. We.
I mean, that can go across the board, and in fact, it is already across the board. But to say that she needs to have eight supervisors, I just, I just, I just don't think that works. I just don't think that works.
So since, what'd you say, 2002, it, we've had a, it hasn't worked for purchasing? I mean, it's worked quite well.
I would, okay, it has worked quite well. It works because we got a really great purchasing agent. Make no mistake about that. But it's the old making the best better. And it really is better, again, for the purchasing agent as well as, I think, for the county. I mean, that's my strong opinion.
And I think you're right. I think moving forward is always a great thing. And that's why they did this in 1989 versus 1907. So going back and giving it back to the clerk was the way that it was originally done, correct? The clerk has always had the purchasing in their department?
You said until 2001 or 2002?
Well, until we moved it out, but I think we had the authority, July 1st, 1989, is when it was done. So shortly after the 1980 and all the modernization that they went through at that point. So, I mean.
My understanding, and I obviously wasn't here, but there, you know, I think there was a point in time in history that there was potentially some confidence lost in the clerk's office. I hope that everyone has that confidence back now. I've only been here five months and continue to earn trust and respect among my peers. So this isn't something I'm asking for, but it is certainly something that I'm happy to, to take on. I believe in empowering my team. Chantel would continue to stay a director. It would really not change for any, any of you. She would go to the third floor offices. Their team would stay the same. She would just have a clear supervisor that would support her and her team. And she and her team wouldn't have, she in particular, would not have to deal with any personnel issues or administrative issues. She would have myself, Nelson, Kerry, others in my office that can support her. The thing I would also add to that is, I do have an incredible team that is great at cross-training. So I have additional resources that can help not only Chantel, but the grant writer. I think there's, Nikki's doing a great job, and there's a whole lot more she can do if she had some more resources. And this office has the ability to provide that. So, again, I'm not looking to, to ask for it, but I'm happy to take it on. And in six months, a year, if you decide that this isn't a good choice, we can come back here and make a different decision. I don't know that it does a whole lot of harm.
I believe Commissioner Blumer wanted to speak to Chantel.
I'm just, I'm just curious what your thoughts are on this situation. Maybe you don't have any thoughts. You reserve the right to not have any thoughts on this situation. Maybe, do you work with the clerk's office very often, or tell us anything you want?
Absolutely. I, I can say that I, I feel I work with all offices quite frequently. The clerk's office, I definitely work with a lot. The statutes are designed in a way that a lot of the roles are shared. Opening bids, you, you see that there are clerk staff that comes and open bids. And with, when it comes to financials, you don't get a purchase order without money being in place first. So there's definitely a relationship there. I, I love working with all of you, and so, of course, I'm not going to pick somebody. Your job is to pick me, not the other way around. So the pleasure is of the board, and I'll be happy to work with whomever in whatever capacity that looks like. I definitely have a lot of questions because I've never served under one officer before. So I think that that's natural and expected. But the office that, I've only been there for four and a half years. It's been well-established before me. And so even with the change, I think that you're going to see a lot of the same processes, usually governed by statute, and it really is whatever the pleasure of the board is. Thank you. No problem.
And then, for those in the audience who are watching, several members, or at least a few members of the Budget Board have visited with Chantel, certainly I have, and this wasn't an item that caught her off-guard. She was talked to about this before. Any other discussion?
The one thing that concerns me, I, this was brought up when Butch put it up, when I first saw it, is the fact that Butch, and I understand, and the rest of us, we're her supervisors. We're the ones that should have been handling any problems she had with her, her workers, any problems she had with her job supervision. And none of us seemed to realize that, including the person that was over, didn't realize that he was her supervisor, and he was a point man instead. So that concerns me, that none of us were giving her guidance or, her bringing her problems to us when it comes to the management, operation, personnel issues. So that concerns me that none of us were giving her guidance or her bringing her problems to us when it comes to the management, operation, personnel issues. And I believe that there's not anyone up here that wasn't capable of giving her sound advice. So that's, that's one thing concerns me. Sometimes you may have too many leaders. And you only need one general.
My big reason for it is just because of the recent staff shortage that she had and I believe that the clerk's office has the, like she mentioned, the resources that can pull staffing together if need be and lean on each other and perhaps create some efficiencies in the future, so.
And I would remind the board, this is a board decision and the Lord giveth and the Lord taketh away. We could change our minds the next meeting. And we frequently do.
Okay, is there any other discussion? There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
No.
Call for roll vote.
Roll call.
I'll get it right.
Assessor.
No.
District three.
No.
Yes.
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 No.
Okay, five to three passes. Okay, item thirty-four. Who's speaking? Micah? Okay.
Can you please pull up there? Okay, this is the supplement time and this is regarding the revenues for general funds for twenty-three, twenty-four. In attachment, in the first column, that was the adopted budget back in, we started that in April, so we estimated the revenues at that point. Today, we're looking at the second column, the amended budget that is based after the year closed and after we got the assessed valuation from the assessor's office and so the numbers compared to the estimated adopted budget, we have a kind of an increase of revenues. The biggest is the four point one million for, from the assessors for the property taxes. That is about eighty-three percent of our revenues each year. Some other items that I need to highlight is that there's, we, we added a column where it's kind of a one-time revenue source because like for juvenile, the revenues we see, we, excuse me, we receive from juvenile, this was actually for two years. We never got payment in twenty-two, twenty-three. So we just received that in August and then going forward twenty-three, twenty-four, we get it on a monthly basis. So it doubled up this year. So we don't want to count on that every year. It's just this year that it doubles up. So another one, big one is of course the ARPA interest. In talking with Mark Cycle with the Treasurer's Office, where he's estimating it to be about three point five million this year. And we don't know how fast the money leaves the ARPA funds and in order, you know, how long we will have the interest. So that is not what we can build our budgets on for the rest ongoing expenses. And then another item is we received FEMA reimbursement, five hundred and nineteen thousand. That was from the storm, the ice storm in twenty. So our revenues compared to July, April is about, is for a total of a hundred and sixteen million, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six. Our fund balance estimated at ten million, actually with looking at all the numbers, increased three point one million to thirteen million, four thirty-seven, given our total sources available of a hundred and thirty million, three hundred and six thousand and hundred and seventy-five. So that will bring our supplement to nine million, nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, eighty, eight hundred and ninety-three.
That's a good, healthy supplement. See it come that strong.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to receive the report as presented by the county clerk.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Cody?
All right, as Micah mentioned, we had a little bit of a different circumstance this year when we were looking at the supplement with having such a large portion of it being one-time money that we can't anticipate into the future. So the approach that we took was we kind of bucketed six million dollars, which are those one-time monies that she just mentioned, versus the remaining three point eight. So when we were looking at funding items with the September supplement, we were careful to make sure that we weren't funding ongoing expenses with that six million dollars. So we were looking at using that six million for more of a one-time type expenditures. And then the three point eight million, we were making sure that any future ongoing expenses that we were potentially committing ourselves to would be able to be covered under that three point eight that was remaining. So that was kind of our approach this year, which is just a little bit different. We did start with the nine point eight million. I've got a little list here of items that we have recommended for you to fund to begin the the year with the supplement. First off, we are recommending a COLA, two and a half percent COLA, similar to what we've done in the past. We stepped it down just a little bit this year, just so we were comfortable with where the numbers were. In general government, we're recommending an increase of just over one point four million dollars. Eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars of that is for our contract with the Criminal Justice Authority. We are recommending a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase in their, in the budget that we give them to offset the increase in their medical contract with turnkey. As well as we looked at the two and a half percent COLA that we were doing for county employees. We were looking at giving them a two and a half percent as well on theirs, which is four hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars to get you to that total of eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, three sixty-three. We also had insurance premiums for our buildings go up fairly substantially, just over three hundred thousand dollars. And we're also funding, instead of just keeping it on the watch list, we are recommending increasing the outside legal line item by two hundred and fifty thousand. So that's one of the items that, you know, occasionally we'll just leave on the watch list. The, the commissioners, there's an increase there. A lot of that though is transfers. The B O C C administrator used to be under H R, then was under District Two for a little bit last year. And we're moving them back out in, well, it's already, they've already been moved back out into the commissioner's account. So there's money in there to fund that position. Treasurer's Office had a little bit of an increase. Most of it is related to premiums, insurance premiums. Most all departments had insurance premium increases. So those are in here. Court Clerk's Office, the, the biggest changes there, we are recommending funding two additional employees to help with the two new judges that are coming in. They'll need two clerks. And so that the, the clerk's office can handle that new workload, we're recommending two employees and we've put budgeting numbers in here for eight months salary there. They also had a change in state statute that is going to affect them. It's House Bill twenty-two fifty-nine. They're going to have to change their operations some. So we are recommending two additional employees for them to be able to help offset that, those additional duties. Well, not additional duties, an increase in duties that they are currently doing. The, the county clerk, we had premiums. County audit, we had to increase that because the ad valorem goes up. It's a percentage. We had to increase that one. Purchasing went up. The, it was annualized portion of the grant writer's salary when they were hired before and we had a flat budget. It was just for a partial year. B O C C, H R, there's actually a decrease. Most of that, well, all of the decrease is related to the transfer of that employee out of their department over into the B O C C administration. M I S, we're recommending a new, a temporary new position. They have an employee that is potentially going to retire in the not-too-distant future. They want to be able to cross-train and have somebody there to learn that position. And then if and when that the other individual retires, they wouldn't backfill that. This position would just take over for that. They had some increases in software expenses. That was most of the rest of their increases. Facilities had some needs on their M and O side and on capital for some asbestos equipment and different things. So that's a hundred and forty-eight thousand increase. Custodial, we're recommending a fifty-one thousand dollar increase in that budget. The old contract did not contemplate cleaning of the sixth floor, since the sixth floor was not utilized for a particular period of time. It was not included in there, so that contract is going to go up due to adding that square footage. Court Services, we're recommending an increase in their budget, just over forty-eight thousand dollars. That is to fund a new position for them, a data analyst, that will help them whenever they're looking at their program. The Sheriff's Department, we're recommending an increase there. It's just over six hundred thousand dollars. A fairly large portion of that ninety-three thousand is due to changes from single to family and increases in folks that are taking benefits. So just like the other elected officials, we're recommending an increase in the budget for those increases. And then if you recall, last year, the Sheriff's Office did a pay parity study. We had agreed to fund half of their increase last year. They would pay for the other half out of their other funds. And then we would just catch up and do the, the full amount this year. So five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is the second year of that obligation that we made last year. Emergency management, increase of ninety-four thousand dollars. Sixty-five thousand of that is a capital expenditure. We've done this for several years and our rural fire departments, I think, really love this program. They purchased a cabin chassis so that they can have a new fire truck out there. It is been very beneficial for them. The, the rest are transfers. We are recommending a transfer into capital projects of five hundred thousand dollars. That's the item that I mentioned earlier on the B E T watch list to fund the, the card reader system for the judicial chambers next door. We are recommending a transfer into capital projects, new jail. Three and a half million dollars of this would go into that project that's associated with the ARPA, the anticipated ARPA interest for this year. And then we've got a five hundred thousand dollar transfer into employee benefits that we are recommending as well as a two hundred thousand dollar increase into the self-insurance fund to pay for expert witness fees. That last five hundred thousand and two hundred thousand that I mentioned, as well as the outside legal earlier, the two hundred and fifty thousand, that's almost a million dollars right there that many times we don't fund at the beginning of the fiscal year. We let it sit on the watch list and kind of watch it. We're recommending, due to having one-time funding and stuff, go ahead and funding those upfront. And that way it will have less of an impact on the reserve moving forward. All that being said, if, if those recommendations were followed by this board, the remaining balance of that nine point nine million dollars, we are recommending to go into the reserve account to be able to be available for unknown, unanticipated expenses through the rest of the fiscal year. It would leave us with one million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five in that account. If, if we didn't transfer that close to a million dollars that we normally don't, that would have us up close to three million dollars.
Three hundred. Million, I mean, okay.
Three million, yeah. Two point eight.
Thanks. I recommend approval of the recommendations of the budget evaluation team.
I would like to actually remove the county clerk item to zero. We, Mike and I had discussed it before. We were trying to make sure that it was something that we could absorb in our budget and we are going to be able to do that this year. So we would like to move ours to zero.
Okay. And if, if the, if the, the county clerk's office moved theirs to zero, took those recommendations out, that was seventy-five, just over seventy-five thousand dollars. I have the exact number somewhere. But if you did that and just took those dollars, I think it was twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars for the increase in insurance premiums and then the, the thirty-nine. Where are we at? The, on the COLA, if you took both of those out, then it would, and you just move that into reserve, it wouldn't change anything else except keeping them flat. And then the reserve account would be one million, eight hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and four dollars.
Okay, then that's my motion with that as amended.
Well, let's hear a second, I guess, before we have a discussion.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, his motion was to accept the entire thing. So you're waiting for a second to accept the entire thing. Except for I removed mine. So.
Yeah, I believe.
Do that first.
I believe the Colonel's recommendation was B E T recommendation with the exception.
Oh.
Okay, so was that seconded?
Was.
Okay. Did you hit your button?
Yes.
Okay. My concern is just about the, the COLAs built in, just with, as we mentioned, I know why the reserve is less than it typically is, but knowing that we probably anticipate a short fund on the jail construction, short, falling short, probably dramatically. And compounding our problems budgetarily on a number of things on the watch list. I, I just don't think we can afford it. It's not an anti-employee thing, but I think that it's just something that we can control and most of the cost things that we have facing us, we can't. I just wanted to state that for the record.
Is there a possibility to delay the COLA discussion to maybe October or November Budget Board meeting? Just until we get a little bit more information?
That would be a, a call of your board. I, I don't know what additional information we would be able to bring in, in a month or two.
I do. I mean, we've had, we've had some dramatic increases in salaries, but some of those have superseded the county employees compared to the trust employees. And I don't know if we should just blanket the number and give everyone the same amount when we would be putting some in a premium position. And I think that that's one of the questions I have is what exactly, from the different departments, what has happened with particularly the trust compared to the county employees? And I, I don't feel comfortable approving a COLA without knowing if we're going to be benefiting one department over the others and creating some sort of turmoil. With what super, with the hero pay and the other information, the other benefits they receive compared to county employees? I don't, I want to make sure that we're, we're making, we're, we're making everybody, we're treating fairly. And also I don't like a cost of living adjustment. I, I'd prefer to have, obviously the commissioner, the elected officers can do what they want with merit pay and I'd prefer to have that instead of calling it a COLA.
For clarification and I'm, it's, so you're, what's, the parts that you're against, just the two and a half to the jail trust?
I'm concerned about the increases that have been given to the jail trust employees.
Okay.
Compared to the county employees.
Okay, so are you, like, are you wanting to pull out then the recommendation, two and a half to the jail trust?
I think, I, no, I don't want to do that. What I want to do is I want to have more clarification on what's happened with those employees' salaries compared to county employees' salaries. I don't want to, I don't want to create a different group of employees that get more than the other employees in the county.
So my understanding is that this would not go into effect until January. Is that right, the COLA?
No, that is not correct.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I, our recommendation wasn't based on that going in, in January, but when, when you guys adopt a COLA, I mean, you, that's something that you would need to stay, you know, whether it starts currently or is retroacted or, you know, began into the future. But our contemplation was not a January beginning. They usually, what we've done in the past has been a retro to July one.
Okay. So would it be maybe wise of us to separate out the COLA? Maybe have a separate. Maybe have a separate discussion on that either here or in a month where we can all process this a little bit more? But, and then vote on the other items.
That's okay with me.
I think we need a moment here for the clerk to trade out Joe on the computer.
Joe's always caught my problem.
You ever come to one of these meetings yet where Joe wasn't a pain in the butt?
I, for one, would appreciate a separate vote. I'm not against the work of what most of the BET has done. And I know there's a lot of hard work and thought that goes into that. And it's just my personal concerns about it. But though if we were going to do a raise, I do prefer a merit-based one, certainly that can allow the electives and the department heads to take into consideration tenure and merit versus just across the board. I do believe, though, in answer to the assessor's question, I think, Commissioner Davidson can speak if he knows more in detail, but I believe that two years ago, they did a ten percent across the board, is that correct?
Oh, that was before my time on the trust.
Well, I thought you were moonlighting there.
That is correct.
Chief Deputy, but anyway, so they, and then they didn't, I believe, last year when the county got an eight and a half.
That's correct, they did not give that.
Right.
Do you recall, Cody, off the top of your head, how many years we've given COLAs?
Well, I think there, they, there were no COLAs forever. And we had employees that were just stagnant because we didn't have money to give raises, merit or otherwise. So about, I'm thinking it was six, maybe seven years ago, we decided to try to tackle this problem that if we don't have money to, sufficient funds to give merit increases, that we could try to keep our employees at the same spending power that they had. So we instituted COLAs at that point. And we've followed CPI every year. This two and a half percent is a little lower than CPI by about a percent. But it was, we tried to get as close to that as we could and be comfortable with our numbers. But to answer you specifically, I believe it was six or seven years that we've done that.
We've been on this path, though, to try to keep up with.
Yes.
And nothing at all against the merit raises, I totally support that. But to me, these two issues need to be separate issues. The two and a half percent, all you have to do is go to the grocery store. I mean, inflation has kicked our butts. And inflation has kicked every single one of our employees' butts. And so that two and a half percent, it helps a little bit, but zero doesn't help at all. So to me, the merit raises are still out there. But the COLA is something to help our people just help combat as much as we can against inflation. And Mr. Chair, if you'd allow me, and of course, that'd be up to the second, but I would be willing to withdraw my motion until maybe I was a little premature in that motion. Maybe there needs to be a little more clarification, that's exactly what the board wants to do.
Well, or at least a separate vote.
Yeah, most particularly a separate vote on the COLA, or the approach on the COLA.
Well, if you're going to do an increase, I mean, if we're talking about doing votes on increases, why wouldn't we do votes on increases of employees and staff? I mean, if we're going to start talking about increases to each individual budget, let's do that. I mean, for the court clerk, we're funding four positions. Two, we know are necessary, they need court clerks for the judges. The other two, we don't even know what your workload is yet. We also don't know what the digitization of your.
I do know what my workload is.
No, hold on.
I'm very clear on my workload. Basically, what this bill has done is we normally have to do collections once a year. We do collections every day, we review every day. We only have to review each person that owes once a year. What they've done is doubled it. Now we have to do it twice a year. I don't have the staff or the computers to do that with. I appreciate the two, I truly do, and I respect your decision. But at this point, you're right, we don't know. We know it's going to, we think it's going to take four to six. We're going to do our very best with two.
So why wouldn't we wait back and see if you need four or six? I mean, typically what we do.
I have to train these people, they don't come off the street knowing what to do. It's very complicated. The things that we do in there, if we make a mistake, if our people aren't highly trained, highly skilled, somebody could lose a child, somebody could lose their wealth, somebody can lose everything they have, they can go to prison. We cannot make mistakes up there, we can't put some amateur off the street doing collections. That's what funds most of the courts is our collections. Oklahoma County is the best there is at it.
Nobody questions that part. But I think if we're going to take a deep dive and we're all concerned about.
The two and a half percent, let's understand that besides this, I have other companies. And the cost of inflation, as Butch said, two and a half percent is simply trying to keep employees where they're making the same money as they're making now. Failure to give a raise, a cost of living raise, what you're doing is now they're not making the same money. You have a lower durability to live. And the jail, funding the jail is one of my priorities. And so when we have extra money, and I think we're going to have some here in a few months, we need to focus on the promise we made to build that new jail. Rick Warren is a hundred percent behind that. But we also have to focus on keeping staff where they can live, somebody making thirty one thousand dollars a year, thirty two thousand, what starting pay is here, and some of them making thirty five, forty. To make them, tell them for two or three years, then basically, if the cost of living is going up currently three and a half percent, in three years, that's about eleven percent, nine and a half, it could be about ten and a half percent.
You know, I just, I'd like to have more discussion about the COLA because the jail trust is talking about sitting on one point one million dollars. They're talking about the overtime problems they're having to be able to staff. Are we going to just give money to, because once the money goes to the jail trust, it doesn't come back. If every other agency in this building has a one point one million dollars in a surplus, it comes back and we take another look at it.
And I'm more willing to take a hard look at it, but we need to focus on the issue that what inflation is, it's outside their control, the cost of your groceries, the cost of gas, gas is going up every day right now.
But if we sit around and just do across the board to every department, realizing that there's money over at the jail trust, should we just give them that money?
I recognize your point, what you're trying to make, so I'm more willing to take a hard look at it.
I'd like to have the BET evaluated and see, you know, is it fair? Does it make sense for everybody?
But we need an answer pretty quickly, because meanwhile, these people are having to eat, having to pay their bills, electricity bill.
But I'm extremely sensitive to what Brian's saying, too. You don't have a lot of money left over.
And we need the jail, I understand that.
I'd also like to address this, though, the Commissioner, that Miles just brought up as far as the jail. I'm not willing at all to close down every other department in this damn county so we can fund that jail. That doesn't make sense. I still got to, you're not going to have to worry about the jail if you don't have a county treasurer collecting taxes or you don't have an assessor making, that's how we're funding that. So to say that we're going to decimate my department because what, you, yes, you did. Yes, you did, you just said that we've got to fund the jail.
That has nothing to do with decimating your department, Butch. I never said defund, I never said take anything away from you, not once.
All right.
Not one time.
That was my interpretation.
Well, you interpreted incorrectly.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that, then, because I don't want to see the county government, the county officers going away.
Nobody's suggesting that. Not one person suggested that. I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting that we all ask the public for their support to build a jail. We do not have, we need to make sure that we meet that obligation.
We've got the support.
But it has nothing to do with defunding your department, nor was that ever said.
Let's get back on track.
So Larry, and I don't know if this would help at all, but you're right. A couple of years ago, the jail trust gave roughly a ten percent increase.
Which was more than we gave to the county.
Right, and then we had done a COLA, and then we did, you know, eight and a half percent last year. I believe when you look at that big increase that they did and then what we've been able to do a couple of times that we didn't give them, I think it's probably about close as far as what they've given their staff, at least what's been reported to us at BET. I think those numbers are going to be pretty close. Instead of spreading it over a couple of years of COLA like we did, eight and a half percent, and then the year before, maybe three percent, they did a big lump sum, and I think they did a little bit before that, which keeps the numbers. And Christie, I know in BET, she said it a couple of times, that it's close. The amount, the percentage of change is pretty close between what they've done for their employees versus what we've done up until this point.
And they're short about sixty employees, correct? They're funding for three hundred and twenty?
Maybe more than that. I think they reduced it from four hundred to three twenty.
I'm just thinking, you know, we all use some standard bookkeeping rules in the county, and the trust is a different animal. And if they're sitting on that money, do they, should they use that money to accomplish this task instead of having the county, because, you know, we were all passing that for benefits? Did the volunteers from the trust come up with money for the benefit that we needed to fix for everybody, including those employees who work for the trust? I mean, I just want to be fair. And that, to me, there seems to be a little bit more analysis that needs to be done on the money situation so we can do something across the board, but take into account the pots of money that may be accessible by some of the departments and the trust.
That makes a lot of sense, I'll withdraw my second. Okay, so I think what we can do is go ahead and approve it minus that, you're comfortable with that motion for the, minus the COLA to have a separate vote on that.
And minus the county.
And minus, and minus the changes that we'd already, that were in my motion already, as requested by the county clerk.
Okay, do you want to read motion?
Would we be able to eliminate the COLA and have the BET come and evaluate all of that stuff?
I think it's a separate.
We're taking the COLA out of it.
Okay.
We're just approving all the other work that the BET did, just to keep us moving down the road here.
Just so you have the numbers, if you pull the COLA out, the two and a half percent for county departments was one million, one hundred and ninety one thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. And the two and a half percent that was associated with the jail was four sixty three, three sixty three.
Okay, when you say four sixty three, are you figuring that on four hundred and five employees? Or are you figuring on the actual number of employees they have? They're funded for four hundred and five employees. They don't have four hundred and five employees, that's a myth.
We utilized the salary budget that the jail provided us. What they said that they're budgeted for, I think it was thirteen million, five hundred and eighty eight thousand, two hundred and forty six dollars.
For four hundred and five employees. But common sense would tell you that if they don't have four hundred and five employees, then we're over budgety on payroll. I mean, it's a simple math, Matty. You've got, how many do they have currently?
I think two sixty five was the last number.
Two hundred and sixty five employees, so why are we paying them for four hundred and five? Discussion's very necessary.
I appreciate it. Can we go ahead and have the motion on the rest of the, are you comfortable with that? Through with the discussion? Okay, you ready?
So while you're continuing having those discussions, are you going to park that remaining? Is it just going to be sitting out there?
Well, we haven't had that vote yet. It may all pass in one big parade, it's just creating two separate votes.
Okay, my motion is approval of the recommendations as presented by our BET, with the exception of pulling out, to pull out the two and a half percent across the board pay raise and to make the adjustments as requested by the county clerk. I believe that's what my motion is.
And I will second, based on those two changes, you have my second.
Any other discussion on this part of it? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
One abstention.
I abstain.
Oh, there's two abstentions. Making sure, okay, we got five votes, so that passed. All right, now, the discussion about individually approving, I assume you want to make a motion for that, the two and a half percent COLA. You're still wanting to go forward with trying to approve that today.
Okay, I'll make that motion so we can get into the discussion. I move that we do a two and a half percent across the board COLA to be effective January one.
For all county employees and trust employees of the jail?
That was the BET recommendation, I believe, right?
Correct.
And that's in the motion, it does include the trust.
I'll second.
Okay, so now we can have discussion on that. And again, I want to reiterate, not against employee, I hear you about the inflation. Certainly feel it at the gas pump, nowhere else, and that's grocery store included. But we just don't always have control of things that are also facing us. The rising cost of utilities and other insurance premiums and other things that are coming down our way, which they addressed in there, but there's still more coming, there's more on our watch list, and this is just one of the options, it's something we can't control, can't control everything. And it's just, without increasing income, but to increase overhead just continues to put us in a vice that's just compounding our problems for all the above. And that's my reason for my opposition. Any other discussion?
Yeah, you know, we've seen the charge, and we've seen the charge now. We continue to be a growing county from a standpoint of ad valorem recipient, I mean, ad valorem receipts. And to me, and notwithstanding very, very valid points that you bring up, my opinion is that we can afford it, that we can. Now, I do think, you know, that COLAs can only be approved on a year-by-year basis. And so, and, you know, and I do think that the two and a half percent, if it were to be passed, it's not a guarantee there'll be a penny next year. But as far, I'm comfortable with the way that the numbers are working out with the current year budget, that we can successfully fund this without it having a major impact on any other parts of our budget.
Cody, what's the total amount of dollars for a two and a half percent COLA or a two percent COLA? The COLA that we're discussing, what's the total dollar amount? One point two million?
It was just shy of one point two for county.
So, so one point two million.
And then four sixty, and then four sixty three for the jail.
And currently, the trust is sitting on one point one million dollars, correct?
I can't answer that.
Well, that's what they said in the newspaper. So I. Well, if somebody, with the money that they have that we don't control and they do, do we fund things for the trust? Because there seems to be quite a bifurcation between those responsibilities and those funding and those budgeting responsibilities. And I want to help however I can, but I also want to have those entities use the funds that they have available to do what they need to do first, so.
Based on all the unknown, Larry, I would recommend waiting on the COLA. Yeah, because we have a huge amount of unknown right here.
We could approve the COLA for county employees, and then we could get more information about the trust, and then we could come back and address that.
Then make an amendment, or move an amendment to withdraw it.
I'd move that, I'd make that amendment to the motion. You know, give the county employees the two and a half, or whatever the COLA amount is, and then have the BET come back with an evaluation of the needs of the trust based on what they're saying they have in reserve.
One point of clarification, Colonel, a minute ago, I think you had mentioned January one effective date. These numbers, I believe, are based on the July one numbers. So it would be a different number, yeah, if we went out to January. We did it at July because it's normally how we do it, is we just retro it so that it's the full year.
So are we going to vote on Larry's or Butch's? Butch has made a motion.
I'm asking to amend, so I guess that would be the amendment.
May I ask a quick, kind of hypothetical question?
Sure.
The money that the trust may have in excess would be, we believe, generated out of their salary and benefits, correct? Because whether it's the four hundred, which we all say is.
All indications point to that, correct.
If they were to take on these COLAs or some other raise, and then they should up their staffing to whatever number, what is the likelihood that they would be back at this group asking for additional funds?
I think highly might be an appropriate answer.
Thank you.
I believe their request for the supplemental was in excess of nine million dollars, was it not?
Their request was three hundred and sixty thousand to fund the increase in jail medical, one point eight million dollars for an eight and a half percent COLA, is what they called it. And then a five point eight million dollar increase to fund eighty nine new positions at the higher rate.
So it was roughly nine million dollars?
Yeah.
I'm not saying the money goes away, Joe, I'm just saying we can do an evaluation. I'm, I'm not saying the money goes away, Joe, I'm just saying we can do an evaluation of that portion for the trust, and then we can see what their problem is, and we'll be, we can fix it with the existing funds and the supplemental.
I understand, I just wanted to.
Yeah, I, I understand.
See if my logic was right, they're going to be back.
The FTE numbers have been over there for some time, and now they're paying overtime because they can't hire people. Well, if you, you know, how do you fix that?
And their numbers have been down since the trust took over. They, they haven't had four hundred and five employees over since they took over. So the imaginary number of four hundred and five versus what they actually have, if and when they hire four hundred and five employees, instead of them taking the money they have now for the four hundred and five and using it to give raises with, they will actually use it for what it's intended. Each elected official has the right to use their money how they wish. But when we fund four hundred and five employees, now we're going to give a two and a half percent raise on these non-existing employees, makes no sense to me.
I would appreciate the amendment being approved or seconded so we could get that.
I'll withdraw the second.
Okay, he has instructions, so it can't comply with his instructions, so he's withdrawing his second. And you want to go ahead and withdraw your motion, and then just maybe make another motion?
Where are we?
We don't know. Three twenty, Robert Esker.
So what you're redoing is you want to amend my motion to pull the two point five percent out.
From the trust.
From the trust.
Just, just for the county employees. And then we can evaluate what needs to be done with the trust and come back with it at, at another time, because we've got time to be.
I would, I would second that, or I don't have a problem with that.
All right, if you've withdrawn your previous motion, you wish to start it all over.
I withdraw my previous motion.
We're going to make you work.
Would it be possible to take two votes, one on the county portion of the COLA and?
Well, that's what I thought I was trying to do.
Two separate, not rolled into one, that way I can participate.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
You want the original motion to stay there?
Oh, you seconded.
No, I guess, I can comply with my instructions, that you do two votes, one on the county aspect and one on the trust aspect.
Okay.
All right.
So you've made a motion?
I've made a motion, I think, to withdraw my motion of the, withdraw motion that I withdrew all ago.
Okay, so you want to try another one?
No. I'm having too hard a time getting there.
Larry, you want to make a motion?
Maybe this means that we should wait a month and come back, uh, next month to have this discussion. We can continue to see what the savings is going to come through with pharmacy. Um, we can all discuss with our team.
Madam Clerk, are you suggesting we table the motion?
I am suggesting that.
Second.
To next month.
Yes, ma'am. No debate.
Did, okay, did you hit your button?
I did.
Okay, it's not reflecting.
Sorry. That, I don't know if that's the, there you go.
Okay, we went through this once before with the previous, ironically, county clerk. And I'm not sure, did we ever, legal, did we ever decide what this table means?
Yes, it means that there's no discussion, you devoted on the tabling motion. And if, after the tabling motion passes, then it goes to, it's tabled, and if it's not, it's, it's disapproved, then it, we continue discussion.
Okay, now that's the assessor's definition, does that sound right? Okay, so, okay, so that's different then, so you're wanting to defer, not a?
Yes. I got caught up in all the excitement.
She made a motion I seconded, it'd be tabled, and we can put it off next agenda.
I withdraw my motion and make it went to defer to all the next budget board meeting in October.
Okay.
I got caught up in such excitement.
My turn?
No, you can second.
I make a motion on item thirty-five, that we approve the items in item thirty-five, except for the COLA which applies to the jail trust employees. And instruct the BET to do more evaluation and investigation so the available funds through the trust can be used to apply to those increases that are proposed.
Larry, I think we're still on my motion.
Are we?
To defer until October.
You withdrew that, didn't you?
I did, but in the same breath, I remade the motion to defer into October. And so we would continue the discussion and come back in October. Would you like to second that?
Sure, second.
Okay, and am I taking it that we don't have a sheriff anymore? See left for good? Okay, so I just wanted to reflect that for the record. All right, so we have our motion clarified, it's been motioned and seconded to defer this item till next month. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's cool, I've never seen defer under the motion up there.
And the motion is on all of the COLAs discussed, correct? To defer it all?
Yeah, this whole, this whole item, I think, isn't it?
Okay, so the motion failed, so now the conversation continues.
The motion failed?
Yeah, it was four to three. Need five to pass, so we lost the share. That's why I was clarifying for the record. Okay, so now, someone take another stab at a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the thirty-five, item thirty-five, and, uh, it's, and remove from that consideration the portion which would be involving the jail trust and for further discussion by the BET and a report.
Well, we've clear, we've passed item thirty-five minus those. So you're just saying, as part of thirty-five, you're wanting your motion, I'm just clarifying.
Sorry.
And to approve the county-only COLA.
Yes.
And Joe, that fits within your instructions? Okay, so you can second? Or do you wish to? Okay.
Second.
All right. Any discussion further on this? This is again, just a vote on the county employees COLA only.
Okay, and so, without any effective date?
The effective date is the BET recommendation back to July, the beginning of the F one.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, the, the motion is to approve. Is that July first, it'd be retroactive to the beginning of the fiscal year. Okay, clear? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
No.
No. Okay, fails again. May not be the votes to get anything done at this point. So do you want to make a motion on your instruction? Joe, with your instructions?
Yeah.
Do you want to take a stab at it?
I will try, I, I think I know the outcome, but.
Yeah, we probably all do.
Based upon, uh, what was approved in item thirty-five, which I believe was just the adjustments to, um, the clerk's budget, is that correct? I, so being on item thirty-six, I would move the adoption of the BET's recommendation with the clerk's amendment.
So you're moving to thirty-six, you're no longer?
I thought we were on thirty-six, I apologize.
Well.
If, I'll wait until we get to thirty-six then.
Cody, it's your interpretation that we're working on item thirty-five, isn't it?
I'm rolling with the flow. Mr. Chairman, I don't believe, I mean, if we've had two actions, both fail, we do not have to take action on thirty-five, we can move to thirty-six with.
That's correct, I just was trying to give him an opportunity to deploy instructions.
I don't think we can.
I get you, we all think that we're in that same boat, but he had instructions, so I'm just giving him an opportunity if he wants to take a stab at it.
I will just point out that if there is no action taken on the two and a half percent, whether it's county or the, the jail trust portion, those monies are still sitting out there. So I think it would, that money needs to be delineated somewhere. Could be just put into reserve and, and we have further discussions later and fund one of those or both of them out of the reserve balance. But with the September supplement, if you just do what has been done, which is our recommendation, minus, uh, the clerk's request, mine, and we already talked about those would go into general fund reserve. That leaves the two and a half percent still sitting out there.
Madam DA, does our agenda item allow for that? Okay.
I move we follow the DA just so we can get off this item.
And I think you need to start going with the flow a little bit easier.
Okay, so do you want to take a stab at a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we, uh, approve item thirty-six as accepted in the recommendations, uh, in item thirty-five, which was to eliminate the two point five percent from the clerk's budget, is that correct? And that money would then be reflected in the reserve.
As well as the premium increase.
Okay, that's my motion.
So to clarify, this is to, because all the rest of it was already adopted. So you're just trying to approve the two and a half percent COLA across the board for jail trust and county employees.
Correct, it would be their, their recommendation.
Okay, is there a second for that motion? All right, now is there a discussion on this motion?
So we're discussing the possibility of doing, without any more further investigation in available funds at the jail trust?
That is.
I, I did not, I'm sorry, I said I was a little confused.
Who seconded it?
Miles.
Ma'am's.
So this would.
This would go ahead and grant?
Back in the COLA, basically, is what you're.
And I assume you're talking about for the retroactive July one for start date?
It would be whatever their recommendation is, less what this board approved doing with the clerk's budget.
Okay.
So, we would be, if we vote no, then we would be voting against the item.
Well, we're doing discussion.
In this motion.
We may already know what you want to do with your.
But with the previous motion, since we adopted the, um, BET minus those items, so we're making two different votes that are about the same thing?
No, this is for the whole enchilada. We've parsed it, those two motions failed, this is for the whole thing, all across the board.
This leaves intact their original recommendation, less the changes that you asked for, and puts your cha, your, your fund changes into the reserve.
Less the two and a half for the jail trust?
No, sir, this is, this is, this is taking their recommendation.
This is his instruction, that's all he. Chief deputies can only vote as they're instructed, and he was given explicit instructions, so he's been asked for a chance to do as he was instructed. So that's the reason for this third motion.
So this motion then, again, would give the two and a half for both.
Yes.
Correct.
It would finalize the budget with two and a half for our employees, two and a half for their employees. Less the, the, less the change from the clerk's office.
Okay, so any other discussion on this item?
I'd urge you to, to vote against this. I think that we need to have more analysis done on the available funds through the trust that could be used to apply to this. And if we don't, then we're just going to be giving them more money to be able to, to do something that, to hire employees that they haven't been able to do. And I, and I, I ju, I just, I don't understand why we would consider that when they are sitting on money that can be used for these, for these applications, and we're trying to save as much money as we can, and we don't have control over those funds. And if they were a part of the budget process, they'd be putting that one point one million dollars over here, and we'd be able to use that to be able to fund the whole enchilada. So I'd urge you to vote no. And we can always wait until we have more, all the officers here, too. Because I want to give a raises best, as much as I can, but I don't want to give money where they don't need it.
We don't want to give raises where there's no employee.
Okay.
Here's, if I could, i, if it would be helpful, we, BET, I mean, if you need us to look at something else. Micah, when does this have to be? So we can, we can have a special meeting, uh, have some discussion, or this group, you guys could recess this meeting until, you know, everybody could be here, um, or call a special meeting. My point is, we wouldn't necessarily have to wait until, um, October, November, uh, if you guys wanted. But the, all of the money has to be accounted for before the end of the month. So that's what I was getting at with that two and a half percent. If there's no action, uh, taken on the COLAs, we need to move that somewhere, whether it's during this meeting or at a subsequent meeting before the end of the month.
So we could hypothetically move those funds to the general fund. Or we could move it to, right now, it would go back, just like the funds from my office did. And then later on, we can have a discussion about doing a raise.
It could.
I, I, I disagree with that. It's right now in the reserve. So that two and a half is all in that, whatever our reserve pot is, seven million plus. And until we take some action to take it out of there, and that's what this motion is, is to take some money out of there. But if we do not include pulling the two and a half percent, it's still in the reserve. Why would it not still be in the reserve? It's not out of the reserve, we haven't voted, we haven't voted to approve it. So none of this stuff is out of the reserve yet.
Micah may be able to answer that, I was told by the clerk's office that we need to specify where that would go.
Yeah, it's, it's not in the reserve as of now, the recommendation is to do the two and a half percent. Um, all it takes is, is a vote to put it in reserve for you all to have time to decide at a later time. For the estimates of needs that is part of this agenda, it needs to be on a line item.
Okay.
So Cody, then, if it would be helpful to, for this meeting, to make a motion to move it to the reserve? If one would choose to do.
I, I'm just pointing out that it needs, before the end of the month, all of the nine point eight has to be accounted for into a line item. Whether you make all of those decisions today, or you come back, you know, you recess this meeting and come back to this meeting, or adjourn and have a special meeting before the end of the, the month, you could choose line items at that point. But if you're, if the, if the goal is to not have another meeting until your regular meeting in October, then it needs to be spelled out what specific line item those dollars would go into.
So we can take our vote for the motion that's out there, and then potentially we could put another motion on the table to move those funds today. And then we wouldn't have to have a special meeting, but next month, we still could come back and discuss a raise. Technically.
That's correct.
With everyone in attendance.
Okay, well, if there are no other discussion, we've got a motion on the floor, we can, it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
No.
No.
Okay, well, we got five votes that time. All right. It did fail. So now, would somebody like to take a shot at moving these funds to the reserve?
I would like to make a motion to move the funds to the reserve today. These specific funds that we're discussing.
Second.
Is the entire nine point nine being moved now, or is it nine point nine minus the items that we just previously approved?
It would just be the COLA piece that we've been currently discussing.
Okay, now, we've approved some of the recommendations, correct?
Yeah.
That you made.
Yes, currently, uh, the BET recommendations have all been, uh, accepted, with the exception of the seventy-five thousand plus for the clerk's office goes down into reserve, and the two and a half percent has not been approved. So right now, the, there would be one point, one million, eight hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and four dollars in the reserve account. The two and a half percent for, uh, county and detention staff is one million, one million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. If you want that to go into the reserve, the reserve would then be at three million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
So instead of the nine point nine, and, and the item says not to exceed, but instead of the nine point nine, and what would be, would that be the exact amount?
May I?
Yeah.
Cody, the nine point nine eight two number is the county's total budget. That number wouldn't change if they elected to withdraw the COLA from its currently mined item allocations and place that into reserve, correct? That nine point nine two number stays the same.
Well, no, that's actually not exactly accurate. The problem, I just thought about this, correct me if I'm wrong, Micah, but the two and a half percent COLA was also considered for revow. It increases the revow revenue coming in, is that going to affect our numbers?
Which way does that number go, up or down?
Going to go down.
So it's, okay.
So this number up here will not be correct if you don't adopt at least the two and a half percent for the county employees. Because the revow account is a ninety percent account. Uh, all the money that is put in there for budget, ninety percent of it is reimbursed back into the county. So when you increase the salaries in that account by two and a half percent, it increases the amount that has to be, uh, sent back. amount that has to be, uh, sent back, reimbursed, and that number is part of the nine point nine million dollars.
Well, those motions have already failed, though, so-
I know, I'm just saying that-
That ship has sailed.
Yeah, I'm just saying that our numbers are not gonna be right.
Okay.
It, it may be helpful, i- if you, it may be helpful for us to come back, uh, before the end of the month, so that we can give you a recommendation, uh, without the two and a half percent, the numbers in there, and it would change the su- uh, supplement number down, and then we could give you one that has the supplement number up, and then we can get to a zero, uh, dollar line in both instances.
Well, that'd have to be separately worded, agenda items, wouldn't it?
Yes, I think it would be two different agenda items.
So we'd need a special, so there's no point in thinking about a recess for this. So for today's meeting, you've got a motion in front of you. It's been seconded, any other discussion on this?
Okay, if we pass this motion that's on the table right now, then what impact does that have on what you all are gonna be looking at? Any?
Well, it, nothing that couldn't be redone at a special meeting, right? It just puts this money somewhere today, and then we can have a special, sounds like we're probably gonna have to, anyway.
Yeah, if you're gonna have a special, then, I mean, you don't necessarily have to specify where it's gonna go, because we just will come back and get it all lined out before the end of September.
So we don't even need this motion?
Correct.
So I can withdraw the motion and then we can come back, as Cody suggested. I think it's a good idea.
Okay. If no other further discussion on item thirty-six, well, go ahead. Okay, then you got those motions withdrawn. Madam Clerk, can you free up our screen? Item thirty-seven then. County clerk. Micah?
This will have to go to the special after the numbers have been adjusted.
Some move to defer to the next meeting.
Yeah, this item is the budget. I mean, once this item is approved, then that's the budget.
Correct. So does it need to be stricken and you rewrite it with potential new numbers, not a motion to defer?
Yeah.
Okay. So a motion to strike?
Yes, motion to strike.
Discussion?
Yes, sir.
This, this again is the budget and the estimate of needs. All of the stuff that we're doing now, I don't see how all of that stuff impacts the approval of the budget today. This is the budget that's being proposed for Oklahoma County for the next fiscal year, our current fiscal, next fiscal year, is it not? And all the other stuff that you're saying is within the guts of it, but this is, we're, we're, this right here would be a proposal to, is a proposal to approve the budget at the macro level. Uh, is that not right?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this one thirty is our old number, plus the supplement number, and if we don't have the two and a half percent in the revow account for the increased salaries, that revow changes, which would make this one thirty-three oh six go down, so this-
Okay.
Could change.
So this may not be the budget, is it?
Correct.
Are we going to have a budget this year?
I hope so.
Yeah.
I'm confident.
I'm confident. Then I'm confident.
Okay, is there a motion to strike?
Motion to strike.
Sir, a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just one abstention. Okay, item thirty-eight. Mr. Trumbo, still here? Still awake?
Item thirty-eight is a, kind of a cleanup item that cleans up that twenty-ten capital fund. There's about a half a dozen projects listed there that we've either completed or, uh, canceled, and we'd like to move all those dollars to a new project that we are going to do, which is the egress on the eleventh floor of the courthouse on the east end. We have a stairwell on the west end where people can go up and down. There is not one on the east end, this is a life safety type project, and this won't fully fund it, uh, this funds about seventy-five percent, according to our architect's estimate. I think that's a little low, so maybe we're halfway there, so somewhere between half and three quarters, being able to fully fund this project, but we do have the design done, and as we can amass money and find it different places, uh, we'll put this thing out to bid at some point.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor of any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Cody?
Yeah, I think thirty-nine is gonna need to be deferred, uh, with no establishment of the budget yet, uh, this five hundred thousand dollars was part of the recommendation we had moving into the capital account to fund this project, but since you're not adopting a budget yet, there won't be money moved into it to be able to accomplish this at this particular time.
Motion to defer.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Cody, wanna talk about this?
Yes, uh, item forty is, uh, an item that will allow us to provide some space for, uh, the two new judges that are coming on board. It will take thirty-five thousand from the, uh, capital item as needed and move it into a line item to build out a judicial chamber on the third floor, plus some minor, uh, adjustments up on seven, I believe it is. I'll move the item.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any citizens to speak? Seeing none, board comments? Court clerk?
None.
Yeah, not today.
No, thank you. None?
Congratulations to our sheriff for being the major county sheriffs of America, designated for the court, and I brought a, a map, a brand new map for all of you, so you can see the whole entire county. They're back, they're in the back.
Motion to adjourn.
I wanted to congratulate, uh, both Commissioner Blumberg and Charles Dodson for winning a prestigious award today from the Len Institute, which is why a number of people had to leave. Any new business? If not, motion to adjourn has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.